Would be the result that you'd expect in two years, three years, four years, so on and so forth. And how does that align with the work and the initiatives and the strategic plan that are designed to move those metrics? And then we can talk about that methodology as well. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tom.
Thank you, Rob. So as Rob is indicating, on the second page here, we have the sort of overview of what we're going to be talking about, just as was indicated, we'll be talking about metrics.
Listening from the room. Do we need to bring a phone here to the middle? I'm pausing for a minute.
Laura just took my computer, she couldn't get it to work.
Okay.
Sorry, Kitty. I think she said something.
That's right. Yeah, really.
Here comes Laura.
Bring Kitty?
There's Kitty.
Kitty, I just put my cat theme laptop case next to the phone. Oh, okay.
Is the phone programming?
The phone is, it's red.
Not anymore.
Dark.
Can I call now?
Yeah.
Waiting for network. Does the network need to initialize, Laura? I don't think so. Okay, there we go. Loading. Ready? It says running. Yeah, looks like it is.
Yes, Kitty, so she gets that.
Um, yeah, yeah, quick up.
Kitty, is that you? Okay, thanks.
Excellent. So this is Jonathan. Kitty, we are on, we are on the overview, so page, page two of the presentation, and just talking about how we're going to, very briefly go over where we are in the overall planning process, talk about the metrics proposed for each outcome, then have a chance to discuss those, and then the same for the approach we have to setting targets, short, present, and tutation, and chance to have a conversation. So on that third slide, it's really just a reminder of where we are in the process. We are currently about to create action plans. We've got, the team's making blueprints for that now. And these were the initiatives that you heard about at your meeting a couple weeks ago that we're doing in phase, in phase one that we're most talking about. This seemed like a good time to pause and think about what metrics might be attached to the long-term outcomes that we hope to eventually impact through those initiatives. On the fourth slide, this is really posing the idea of what might good metrics look like, right? And while these are fairly broad terms, you may have heard other places, the meetings we would attach here in terms of validity are around, it really should be related to a long-term outcome. We've said that's what we hope to impact, so any metric we pick should have some ostensible relationship there. But even more importantly than that perhaps, it should be aligned with a particular initiatives. Actions that we're taking should correlate to what we hope to impact and what we would all want that way. Reliability notion might feel a little bit too technical, but for a measure to be looked at over time in terms of improvement, it should be measured in a consistent way and with precision that's adequate to the kind of use we would make. Promoting a positive accountability is a little bit more to be inferred there, but my hopes for that is that we would have a balanced set, right? Our model is we hope to provide more opportunities for students, then we hope to impact the growth that they make over time, and with increases in growth over time, that will lead to higher achievement and have our best gap-closing possibility with a combination of those, providing more opportunities particularly for students in the gap, seeing higher growth for those students in the gap, and then leading to higher achievement. The most sort of technical here might be this idea about avoiding incentivizing counterproductive actions. That notion really comes from the possibility that when you're using these metrics for accountability, you would not want to have them focus only on, say, students who are just about at the meets expectations level, right? So you might make some technical choices about choosing a mean scale score for achievement, since that can be impacted by changes across the whole spectrum, whereas if you say, we only want to know about the ones who reach the meets expectations level or higher, that does promote a certain activity that's trying to increase for those students, potentially at the expense of others.
And just to interject here, this is something I just think that, you know, Jonathan and I have had conversations, you want to be really careful about. You don't want to incentivize the wrong things. When you start to report out metrics, people are going to pay very close attention to these metrics, and if you have great metrics, what they do is they begin to drive performance and actions of people to increase or get those metrics better or improved, right? But if you have bad metrics, for example, Jonathan's example, and I've seen this happen in my own career, where you would have a metric on how many kids meet a certain level, schools would call it the bubble kids, right? The theory is if you just focus on the kids that are, you know, if you focus all your energy on the kids that are 10 points away from meeting, right, we'll be able to jump that metric and pat ourselves on the back. Meanwhile, there's swaths of kids who needed the support and the focus who then were ignored because of that, so.
What's more important to me even than that is what are the consequences? So as we've talked about, the consequence is that you're going to punish the kids who are below a line and reward the kids above or punish the teachers, as opposed to how are we going to improve and how are we continually going to try to make this better? I think it's what we attach to the metrics that's equally important. I'm assuming you'll get there to, are we just feeling what we're going to talk about tonight?
So just philosophically, this idea that we're going to beat people over the head with metrics, I don't, I don't agree with that. I think that these are things that should measure our progress, and we should be accountable, right? But drawing these metrics to an evaluation of a single teacher, you know, penalizing a kid within a certain metric isn't something that I support. I don't know that we talked about that in this, in this presentation.
We don't.
But just know that philosophically, I wouldn't bring something forward that did that. These are really, what are the metrics that we can set that will tell us how well our strategic plan is working and how well we're reaching our long-term outcomes?
So speaking of those long-term outcomes, on the fifth, on the fifth one, we posed those about that all students benefit from challenging relevant opportunities, that we reduce disparities in achievement, and that every student graduates empowered with the skills necessary for postgraduate success. The next slide poses what that whole set looks like organized by the long-term outcomes. So looking at the left-hand column, the kinds of challenging and irrelevant educational opportunities we would talk about is posing a potential metric, right, are ones about enrolling in advanced courses and other challenging courses or programs to study. The idea that it wouldn't just be enrollment in those courses, but passing grades in those courses. Some favorable rating of the climate of the school impacts the student's ability to participate and profit from the opportunities that we offer educationally. We would think in that case of some index of scores that combines over multiple facets of the school climate measure that we have to be looking towards a metric to think about that way. And then at a super-specific level, the different kind of opportunities that students will get more of over time, this opportunity to earn an AA or through ascent or concurrent enrollment, right? So we have an idea there, kind of range of opportunities.
And we can even expand that to say how many kids are earning college credit through those programs, maybe not getting all the way to the AA, but making sure that we balance and understand what that looks like.
Great.
By favorable rating of school climate, how badly does that, again, fit under that column?
So it's meant to fit as far as opportunity. The idea that part of the opportunity we provide students, in order for them to profit from the educational opportunity, the experience that we offer that's academic, they need to be able to access the school, and having a school climate that deports them adequately, right?
So this would address like, maybe kids of color who don't get, have access to AP programs or something, they would be responding in a climate.
It may be better just across all three, right? How climate impacts all three, like, as opposed to just directly correlated to challenging relevant educational opportunities.
This is not the first thing that comes to mind under that column, but I understand, like, if a kid doesn't feel like they have those educational opportunities, if there's not advanced LA offered in their middle school or something, right, then that might reflect in a school climate score or something, is that the link?
Or, you know, I mean, I'm just thinking about conversations that I've had, especially with some of our Latino students who didn't feel welcome in advanced classes.
Well, it could be true even with clubs and sports, you know, how we created a culture that brings in diverse people, or do you have to have done in a competitive soccer league for eight years?
So we would have to work on what that climate rating is, but this idea of, you want a great climate in schools, right, as something that aligns to what it is we want for our long-term outcomes.
Maybe there's a, like, if there's 30 questions on the climate survey, maybe five, a section of it relates to that or something.
And then we can correlate that, and we can track that, yep.
Yep, that's a good idea. All right. Now, as far as disparities could go, right, we would pose those on many of these measures, but most particularly on achievement in math and language arts on this TMS, and we would want to think of that in terms of growth also on that measure and on the PSAT, SAT, right? There is growth from CMA to PSAT, PSAT to PSAT, PSAT to SAT. All of those provide some indication of the growth that students experience in high school. And the idea about disparities here would really be to look at the disparity between the overall performance, and again, we pose this mean scale score and median growth percentile for Latino students and for those who are eligible for reduced lunch.
And would we see any comparison, Jonathan, on the overall? We would be able to see the metrics in an entire group, but would we be able to pull out each school and see how each school is progressing?
It would be, it's meant to be that way, and other than on the measures that are sort of most tailored to a very small number of students, so you wouldn't have school-level results maybe that made a lot of sense to track, but for most of...
So the large comprehensive high schools and the charters, we would be able to pull those out, okay?
We need to be able to pull those out in that case, so we know where to direct our attention, energy, resources, and support. If you, if you have big, large measures and you want to impact those measures, you've got to look kind of granular to see where, you know, what's happening, where you need to kind of invest more, so.
And we wouldn't necessarily be able to get some of the data for charters, because they, the only data we, they choose to run, but CMA is for the end of the PSAT.
So you would love all the Latino students in that area there? You have Latino students that are English language learners, you have Latino students that are not, so.
Right.
Would you be able to segregate that data at some point?
We would absolutely be able to disaggregate it, and I think as far as the metrics could go, my, my only caution would be to focus the metrics on demographics that don't, that don't as much change. So you, so I would caution against having a metric that was specific to English learners because the way that we might define that group, or because of the demographic changes that may occur as far as more new-to-English students arriving, or not as many arriving, you can get, there's a little more volatility in the measure.
Do we have any metrics that would measure?
So, the advancement of English language learner, for example, I know we have.
I think this is the question that Jonathan and I talked about, right? So if you, if you were to measure, and I think the challenge that we discussed is when you, if you, if you put English language learners as a subgroup, right, and you're looking for people to improve performance as English language learners, could you potentially incentivize people not exiting kids from the program to show growth in performance? Does that make sense? Now, not to say that people would intentionally do that, but I think just we have to be really, really careful. Now, one of the things that we could look at is the percentage of students that were exiting from the program to meet certain criteria, right, as a different way to take a look at that, and we can certainly consider that, Richard.
I think I have an RFI on that, and I don't think I've gotten a response on the RFI, by the way.
On the, on the, the number of students that are exiting the program?
Right.
Okay.
From your FAFSA and all of that stuff, yeah.
Okay, okay. So I think we could consider, what does everybody think about that?
That sounds right.
Yeah? Jonathan, what do you think?
That particular one makes a good, good, tense sense, based on the ideas about validity and reliability.
Yep, okay.
In that, and we'll just want to make sure that, kind of strategies that we have to target that, right? That's kind of the next step, is to say, do we have a strategy coming online that is meant to impact that?
Right.
So that, that would be the next.
And what about the special education, is that separate or?
I mean, I think it falls, if we could, it falls within the same kind of premise, right? You know, if you have kids that are getting special ed services that could be exited from the program, going to a less restrictive environment, I've been in districts that have measured, you know, a certain percentage of kids that are being served in a least restrictive environment. Are you referring to their, just their overall performance, or?
Just why they're not named, is...
That's, that's the reason why, because it's...
Right, and our wish to make sure that we don't create any incentives to keep a student in special education who really doesn't, doesn't need that level of support, it's a, it runs the risk of being of the kind of metric that incentivizes something that's kind of...
But we're still be tracking special education achievement and growth, right?
Absolutely.
And you know, the cool thing is, the state implemented maybe five years from, maybe six, because I said on the first phone calls of these parents, the post-school outcome data, on one year out, where are those students and what are they doing?
That's, yeah, we have that in our column, so.
You don't want to incent people to push them out either.
If they're getting the right services.
You don't want to keep them in, you don't want to push them out.
Let us think about that, yeah. So if they need the services, we don't want to incentivize them not getting the services that they need, right, to Ellie's point. But in the same time, if the least restrictive environment is one that's where kids can handle more inclusion, I mean, that's where we'd want to put kids. Let's think about that, Jonathan.
Great.
Okay.
So in the column on the right, because it's...
I'm crazy that, because when you look at reduced disparities, I'm looking at a lot of disparities, not just the Latino kids or the Fed kids, LGBTQ, I mean, where does that come in?
Disparities in regards to, so...
Achievement.
Well, yeah.
On student achievement, or are you thinking in other, other ways, Richard?
Looking at achievement, what you have on that.
Right.
Yeah. We wouldn't have data on LGBTQ individual kids to disaggregate.
But your question might be best answered in school climate.
Because we do disaggregate, right?
Right, like, so we could dig into some of that when we think about school climate, Richard, if that makes sense, if I'm hearing you correctly.
Right, we can dig into that on the, on the healthy kids called out of service, which is an area that where that, where we do have that level of disaggregation, and those are, and some of these questions are more school-related than others, yeah.
Does that, does that kind of get to what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, but, you know, the other piece too, we have a Native American population in our schools, and I believe I asked that question too, where are we with our Native American population? Just because of that recent grant that...
Yep.
That we approved just recently, how many Native American kids do we have in our district? You know, the, you know, that kind of...
We can get that for you. I mean, Jonathan, offhand, you know, as you think about N scores and being able to report out on that, are our, what are numbers?
Right, so, so our numbers may be sufficient to do it at BVSD level across multiple grades combined, but as far as having, say, the graduation rate, that we'd want to hang a lot of, have a sense of that it needs to improve from what it is, just because you're going to get volatility when you've got small numbers that way.
African-American population the same way. I'm not sure what it is now, right?
Does that sound right to everyone?
That we should think about Native American kids?
Native American, African-American students in addition to Latino free re-use lunch?
Yeah, it's just the numbers will be... There's other categories as well.
All right, let's go back and let's think about that, on whether or not we could or couldn't do that, we get back to you all.
Right, and at some point, the question of how many metrics to, would one want, and do you want to mix metrics, right? I mean, is it the aggregation of students who are Latino or African-American or Native American? Is it the combination, or is, with each group, are there targets in terms of disparity on these measures?
Well, I think it would be interesting to see there are differences, right? I mean, if you, even if you have a small number of Native American students, you could compare them with Latino students or things, but I think when you're measuring FRL, you're including potentially mixed groups anyway.
Yeah, absolutely.
So you're already doing that.
And we can always do reporting out, right? And there may be some things that are interesting and want to knows, but as we think about keeping our metrics tight that we're holding for accountability, like, but here what you're saying, certainly we want to be transparent, we want to report out, we want to be accountable. So let's, Jonathan and I, we'll go back and think about that.
All right, so in our column on the right, postgraduate success, so we do talk about meeting, career and college readiness benchmarks, graduation rate, FAFSA completion rate as a measure of students accessing the potential for financial aid. Now, that one's a little tricky, because not everybody wishes to fill out a FAFSA, many families don't qualify, don't wish to, but that proposes, that does pose an opportunity measure.
I put on, I put that on there, and I can talk about it, why?
College enrollment and persistence as an outcome measure, we would, that's sort of pretty obviously related to postgraduate success, and finally, the seal of biliteracy as a measure of that kind of advanced competency that students attain.
To talk about FAFSA a little bit, you know, this idea that we have lots of kids who have the potential to go to college and money gets in the way, right, and if you don't fill out the FAFSA, you can't, you know, as, as a kid who qualified for Stafford loans and Pell Grants, and understood how hard that was, because I had to do it on my own as a 17-year-old kid trying to sort that out, this idea of making this a priority to make sure that all kids who even, you know, that we, that we focus on that, within college enrollment and persistence, what I really think would be interesting is, you know, we, when we graduate kids, and we tell them, you're ready, and they show up to college and college says, you're not ready, right, their mediation rate, and then how many kids are re-enrolling for a second year of college? Have we given them the skills, right, and the knowledge to be able to do that? I think those are really powerful measures that can really, that's information we can access through the National Clearinghouse, and I think would be really strong measures. And then ultimately, with the seal of biliteracy, I just think that we have a lot of work to do there. I think that that's a great asset for many of our bilingual students that, and I went to several, I mean, I went to almost all the graduations, and when the kids stood up with the seal of biliteracy, most of them were not our Latino students, our bilingual students, they were white students, and I think that that's an opportunity for us to get better.
How many industry certificates do we offer?
I have that, I don't have that right here, but...
Come on, Rob.
No, no, not enough, not enough. But as we think about this idea of postgraduate success, you know, the gift that you would give a graduate to be have a skill in something they're interested in, whether they want to go right to work and begin to do, to work, or even if they're working their way through school, this idea of increasing the ability for kids to earn industry certifications is something that Arlie and I and our team, our cabinet team, have had really strong talks about. So if, so to answer your question, as we set this as a metric, then the accountability of people, how will we get more kids through those industry certification programs and kids successful through the programs?
So, not to keep us on this slide forever, but I still like the way that the state did it, because it was a year out and random selections, and we sat on the phone, like, phone interviews, and talked to not only parents but students as well, to find out where those students were, what they were doing, and had they, are they being successful? I think it might be interesting, should the district decide to do random sampling, where those phone calls are made, and out of 1,000 students, here's what we found a year postgraduate.
I do think that would be interesting. I think for the measure that we have, the validity and reliability to the accountability, but, Donna, as we watch that measure, that metric, whether it's moving in the directions we want to or not, those are the types of deep dives to get to the root causes of the experience that we're trying to provide. I love that idea.
So you know, there's been a lot of questioning about whether the graduation rate is a good metric or anything, because, talk about incentives, you know, it's easy to pass kids through with credit recovery and all sorts of ways just to increase your graduation rate, so I, you know, it's an easy one, I get that, but I'm not sure it's the most effective one.
You know, it's funny, we talked a lot about this, and, and, and we put it on there, because if you didn't put the graduation rate on there, I mean, you know, the public is going to want to know what your graduation rate is, but are there kids that are better served in five years? And as you think about the kids that, that go through ascent or concurrent enrollment, some of those kids, it's in their best interest to go five years, because then they can be concurrently enrolled for another year to earn more credits. You know, we, you know, as we think about graduation rate, we think about our kids in our transitions program, right, you know, that, you know, they...
Right.
You know, they need to be there, like, you don't want to disincentivize kids to take the time that they need, because when you talk about a national four-year grad rate, it doesn't take those things into consideration, right? So we have it up there, but as we set targets, we can nuance the targets, right, to better understand, you know, what it is that we're trying to do to not incentivize the wrong things, right?
What an invitation to this slide about targets, huh? So the methodology we propose is one you've heard about elsewhere, SMART, the targets are indeed, as we talked about, specific and measurable. The question about them being attainable is a really important one, attainable as opposed to, say, possibly aspirational, right? And that they're relevant to the particular...
So, you know, it's an easy one, I get that, but I'm not sure it's the most effective one.
You know, it's funny, we talked a lot about this. And we put it on there because if you didn't put the graduation rate on there, I mean, you know, the public is going to want to know what your graduation rate is. But are there kids that are better served in five years? And as you think about the kids that go through ascent or concurrent enrollment, some of those kids, it's in their best interest to go five years because then they can be concurrently enrolled for another year to earn more credits. You know, we, you know, as we think about graduation rate, we think about our kids in our transitions program, right? You know, they, you know, they need to be there. Like you don't want to disincentivize kids to take the time that they need. Because when you talk about a national four-year grad rate, it doesn't take those things into consideration, right? So we have it up there, but as we set targets, we can nuance the targets, right, to better understand, you know, what it is that we're trying to do to not incentivize the wrong things, right? Okay, let's move.
What an invitation to the slide about targets, huh? So the methodology we propose is one you've heard about elsewhere. SMART, the targets are indeed, as we talked about, specific and measurable. The question about them being attainable is a really important one. Attainable as opposed to, say, possibly aspirational, right? And that they're relevant to the particular initiatives that we have going forward and obviously that they're in some timeframe we're talking about. This idea really is around alignment also, right? And we've talked about, we would show performance on a large array of measures and we might target the point at which we believe that the impact of initiative is coming online and will be expected to have an impact. That may not always be in the very first year, that something new has been being done. There is implementation dip as a possibility for certain kinds of interventions.
And this speaks to Kathy's point earlier, like you want to train teachers if we're doing, like example, you know, we presented around the new literacy rollout, right? You have to give them time to learn, understand and grow before the expectation is, "I just trained you today, not next week, the scores are going to be, you know, up." So just being sensitive to that. And so as we set targets, knowing that that's a possibility to set just the expectations. But rest assured, and I know we have attainable and I think, you know, aspirational just as much as attainable because we don't want to set a low bar and leap over it. We want to set goals and targets that press us to get better, so...
Great. The last bullet there, it really is about that we would review our proposed targets with Dak and the Fall.
I'm just kind of a little confused about what, whether the cart's in front of the horse or horses from the cart here in terms of initiatives versus metrics. At one point, you said we want to make sure our initiatives align with our metrics, but I think your metrics should align with your initiatives.
That's exactly right.
Okay. Which is what I think this is saying, but yeah, okay.
There you go.
I think we asked him.
I asked him during...
How's this feel?
Good.
It's good, okay. We have work to do. I appreciate the feedback and we will be back in August. I think we're going to be circling back with Dak and then we'll be letting you know kind of where we'll be. We'll get to work. Thank you.
Rob, do you need five minutes before we start?
I need five minutes to get the tape.
Kitty, you can just call back, okay?